Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the city shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting.
This Tuesday, June 17, 2025, here at City Hall Council Chambers, 209 East Kern Street in Taft. The City of Taft council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at https://www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and also be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. Made by phone to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, and any comments received shall be read into the record. We're going to start tonight's meeting off with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Shavira, and then have an invocation led by Mr. Greg Mudge, if you'll please join me.
Right hand of a heart. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we're so thankful that we've been blessed with the opportunity to have a responsibility to make plans and decisions that impact the citizens of this community. We're so thankful for Jesus and your love for all of us, and we just pray, Father, that your spirit will work in our hearts and our minds as decisions are here that will impact the lives of people here that depend on us. We ask your guidance, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Shavira.
Here.
And Mayor Norris, absent with notice.
Thank you. Item number one on tonight's agenda is the study session, code enforcement activity update, and revision of local code overview presented by Valerie Escalante, is it Tresh?
Very close, Tresh.
Tresh, sorry, I apologize, from the Civica Law Group, City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, evening, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. Thank you for being here today and having, taking the time and opportunity to discuss with yourself as well as the community some updates that the city, through your direction, have been taking to make sure to protect the community from safety and welfare of the community. So I'm also speaking on behalf of staff today because, of course, although I am outside council, the efforts that you guys have put into code enforcement.
Thank you. The efforts that have been done on the legal side, which I've helped with, couldn't be done and not possible not with just you, but also staff that has put this forward. So Cody Smith, code enforcement specialist, as well as Mark Goller, building official of code enforcement as well. All right, so I think if the council recalls, back in June of 2023, you made an investment to update the municipal code. A lot of the code had been outdated in certain respects, particularly on the code enforcement front. So the goals of those updates were to enhance public health and safety. We were updating the code to also reflect the current federal and state court cases that were impacting things like camping and habitation in vehicles. We were also enhancing the tools available for code enforcement to be able to, you know, address different problem properties in the city. We were also making sure that the codes were clear, well-written. A lot of the codes still had older language, and so streamlining it, updating it. And so since that time, we want to talk a little bit about what staff has been doing as a result of those updates. So the focus areas for those updates were things like your administrative citations and appeals, the processes to how to go about abating nuisance-related properties that were impacting particularly downtown areas and other properties in the vicinity, regulations for encampments as well, and leaving items on public rights of way. So some statistics for you, courtesy of Cody Smith. Since June of 2023, there were 40 formal code enforcement cases open. Prior to that, the statistics were not as broad because they didn't have the tools at their belt. Now they do. Since then, of those 40, 30 of the cases were closed with compliance. Okay? Of those cases, okay, or beyond those cases, there are hundreds of cases where no formal code case needed to even be opened because staff also takes a very proactive approach to speak with community members and get compliance through communicative negotiations and helping people get, you know, their questions answered. In addition, there are ongoing cases, five are new, there are five that are ongoing following the legal processes that you have now in the code. So those processes are to ensure that the community gets notice, right, and the opportunity to correct and abate if they're unable to do it immediately. Okay? The kinds of compliance issues that code enforcement staff have put together, dilapidated structures like in the downtown area, unsafe residences, illegal street vending, illegal personal property storage, there's cleanups that are ongoing in the alleyways, ditches, bridges here throughout town, encampments as well, weed abatement, vehicles on unimproved surfaces. These are all areas that code enforcement has been able to focus on with their enhanced tools. Okay? The methods of enforcement utilized run the gamut. They start with kind of that personal contact, right, discussions with property owners, tenants, people that are kind of creating the problems, right? Also, for construction and work that is ongoing that shouldn't be because they don't have permits and proper approvals, they're issuing stop work notices, documents that are telling people, "Come to the city, work with us, we'll work with you, but let's do it right." Right? Administrative citations. These are citations that give direction on, "Here's your code violation, here's the issue that we see, and it is now associated with a fine." Okay? Your code enforcement staff has also been engaging in inspections of property through consent when given with property owners, and also they have worked with our offices to get court orders authorizing inspections of properties where there's no one that's cooperating or no one to really answer for the property. You also have things like liens, and you have ongoing receivership cases. Those are two cases, one in particular, we're going to talk about, see some photos in a minute, that you've actually utilized the court to get a court order to have someone, a third party appointed, to bring a property into compliance. Okay? Now, now we're going to get into some fun before and afters, right? And so here's a case, okay? This is 405 Center Street. You may all recall, you live here, you deal with it, there was a fire that destroyed this commercial property in 2023. Okay? The owner wasn't local, so the owner wasn't able to step in right away to stabilize. You guys did. You guys stepped in and you conducted an emergency abatement, you had the big, you know, haulers here clearing out the junk, the rubble, and you were able to clear it up and fence it off. Okay? The property owner was looped in, the property owner consented to this after the fact, and they said, "Thank you for stepping in and getting it done." So this is our before, this is our after, right? So now it's stabilized, there's fencing. Okay? There is ongoing assurances that they're not getting unauthorized access to the lot, so no further issues will come about. And the goal here, long term, is making sure that this vacant lot is not an eyesore and something comes about. So those are next steps, right? Next steps and goals is to kind of turn this around long term. Another property, 209 Center. This is a property where the owner is deceased and there's no point of contact. Okay? So instead of just letting the property sit, there were historical dangers. The roof was falling during heavy windstorms, I understand the roof came off and fell into the neighboring nursery, okay? Squatters were there, there was a lot of high level of calls for service to police as well. Okay? There was illegal tampering and use of electrical on-site through squatter activity. So you guys, with your new codes and with kind of the training behind you, you went in and you did an abatement this year, February 20, 2025. You guys went in, cleared out the property of all the junk, trash, and debris and fire hazards, you disconnected all the power, you secured all points of entry. And so now, we're closed.
I apologize. Can I just stop you right there? Think back to before we implemented these policies, would we have been able to do a similar, take similar action on both of these properties? I guess that's a good question.
I think you probably had the ability to do it, but your codes weren't as up-to-date to be able to give you the clear authority on how to do it.
Perfect.
And I would also add, with the investment that you guys have made on updating your codes, we've also updated and helped staff make sure that they're implementing the codes in the best way, right? To make sure we're doing the proper due process that the community gets and deserves, and also ensuring you guys as a city are not dealing with liability on the backend of not doing it the right way.
Wonderful, thank you.
Next, another property, 213 Center. This is a property that was a two-bedroom, one-bath, still is, but detached garage. Okay? It was uninhabitable space, you can see from the photos, it was filled with junk, trash, debris, rodent and pest infestation. It had numerous broken points of entry for unauthorized access, numerous calls for police intervention. Okay? This one, we did have contact, okay, with the owner, and code was able to get consent. The owner said, "Yes, help us out, we can't do it ourselves, help us out." So code enforcement was able to get consent in this April, cleared out all the trash, debris, and items posing a hazard. It was shut down, all the power and water sources that was attracting people coming in and staying on-site, they red-tagged it, which means prohibits for occupancy, and they secured all entry points. Another property, you guys have on 407 Center. Okay? This is a property that was a substandard commercial suite shop. It's been vacant, boarded up, okay? The owner did give the city consent to conduct inspection back in 2023 in March. Staff did an excellent job when they went through that inspection, identifying every single code violation, right? From the building issues to the code issues, gave that report, there's a copy of it here on the screen, gave that detailed report to the owner, and has been working with that owner to either fix it up, or what the owner ultimately did was sold it. And they sold it to a buyer with that inspection report, so the buyer is now bringing it up to code. Excuse me. So what you're going to see is in the front now, all-new glass facade, inside, we don't have pictures yet, but we have an inside, it's completely freshly painted, okay, new flooring as well. And that owner still has made commitments that they're planning to do more. All right, this is our receivership case, the 122 Kern, right? You guys probably know this very well because it's directly across the street, catty-corner to where you're at, sitting today. This property had been pretty much abandoned, right? Property owner also deceased. It was a site of numerous break-ins. You can see from the photographs the huge accumulations of junk, trash, debris, health and safety dangers. Okay? What we did is we followed the California Health and Safety Statute procedures, okay, with code's great work at doing inspections and kind of leading up to this step with enforcement efforts. And the court agreed that there is help needed. So a third-party receiver was appointed over the property to stabilize it. What the receiver did was facilitated this property, a sale, to a third party, and that third party is now rehabbing it. I probably don't need to show you the photos because you see it every day, but there it is. Excuse me. What you're going to see is they're completely cleaned out, okay? There was a complete overhaul in the inside, all-new roof, plumbing, electrical, mechanical landscape is coming soon, right? And so this is a buyer who has now stepped in, the court blessed the sale, and they are flipping the property to make sure that it is safe and beautiful and compliant with code standards. All right? Now, lots of work on the encampment front. I think the encampment front and the alleyways and public places where there's junk, trash, and debris left out is probably, I mean, this is my kind of just looking at the pictures and kind of understanding the amount that your guys' team is putting in, they're putting a lot of effort. And so that's something that may not be readily seen because a lot of times they're kind of out in ditches and other places, but those are real dangers. So you'll see in the alleyways, Monday through Friday, Public Works patrols every day to clear out abandoned junk, trash, and debris. Code enforcement will step in when there are, you know, when there is an owner there that we can identify who left the junk, trash, and debris out, and they'll work with them for that owner to clear it out, right? So it's not all on the city, the city saying, "Hey, if I found someone responsible, we're going to help bring you into the loop so that you can help clean up the mess." Bridges, at least once a month, your Public Works team and code enforcement team, they're going out to clear out the imminently dangerous areas, and you're following your code processes to do that, right? Other encampments, Public Works and Code not only are responding to complaints, okay, by the community that are saying, "Hey, I see there's this encampment, it's dangerous, there's people, you know, harassing us," they're also affirmatively patrolling the streets and identifying places that need to get addressed. And so we're going to see a few pictures of before and afters in the next couple slides. So you can see the kind of amounts of junk, you can see there's areas that are high fire hazards with branches and wood and overgrown vegetation that's getting cleaned out. You'll see areas between properties and alleyways, back areas that have accumulations of lots of items, okay? But you can see, final picture, it's getting cleared out, right? And I'll be very clear, your code has processes, and your team is following the processes to make sure they're giving people the right and opportunity to collect their belongings, move along, and what's left that's abandoned, they're getting rid of, right? Or things that are soiled and dangerous to be left out. Right? Here's some other examples of these kind of, you know, underpass bridge areas. So big encampments that are getting cleaned up, hundreds cleaned up since June of 2023. In addition to that, you have since June of 2023, you updated your codes to make it very clear on the do's and don'ts for street vendors. Okay? There's law on the books that had some parameters of what cities can do, and so you guys made sure to regulate. And so your regulations require a vendor permit from here through the city, special permits through the city, as well as, before they even start, a county permit that ensures that their food handling is safe, right? Because you want to protect the community. So when code sees the people that are not compliant, code is able to go out and make sure that these dangerous food items are not being sold on city streets.
We discussed the difference between taco wagons and a street vendor. Yeah. I don't want people to think that we allow like the taco wagons.
Right, yeah. So that's a good question. Your city manager brings up, let's make sure that the council, the public understands that there is a distinction on vendors here, okay, and throughout the states. Okay? There are street vendors with carts on a sidewalk, right? That's what we're talking about.
The state.
Yeah. And the state does have laws that say we have to allow it, but we can regulate how to allow it. Things like requiring permits, requiring different types of kind of insurance, things that we can make sure that we are protecting the community. There's something else, food trucks, bigger, right, on the streets. That stuff's not allowed here in town. That has not been regulated by the state as of yet, and so you guys have prohibited it, and so that's our distinction. So when we're talking about vendor enforcement, we are talking about setting up shop on a sidewalk, that type of public place.
I got a question on that.
Sure.
And I think it's just important that the viewers understand this as well. We don't have necessarily the taco trucks in the city, but we do see them in the county.
Right.
And I don't know if they're even on, even if they own their own property, but they're out there. But I just want to make sure that we understand that that is not city area, and there's not much that we can do with that area other than, and contact the county and have them go and look at it.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head, right? That's a jurisdictional issue, right? If something's not in the city, you can't deal with it, you can't enforce that, that's outside your guys' parameters, right? I wish, I'm sure you guys wish you could do it all, but that's what our funding, that's what our budget is for, city property, right? City locations. And so you're right, when it comes to the unincorporated areas that are county, it's making those phone calls, connecting, you know, those complaints, those issues to the county so they will take action, or try to take action. Any other questions?
Gentlemen? Orchard?
Sounds good.
I'd like to say, more of a statement than anything else, that the people know that things move kind of slow a little bit, we have to cross our Ts and dot our Is and stuff before we can enforce it. And you went ahead and looked through our code and saw it streamlined, so you can work with our code enforcement so they can do it the right and correct way, so that when they do the paperwork to get the citation or have to go to court, everything's all streamlined, that we will prevail in that, and it's done legally and incorrectly, and they all offer, they have opportunities to correct it before it even goes too far, other than the first contact is inspection, and then the ticket, and then from there. But we spent a lot of money to do this, to help the people who are concerned about what's being done in the city as far as cleaning up the homeless camps, the blighted area in our city, and we're doing it. But this just takes a little time, and we do need community input, they see an area or see a plate, or that they will inform us or the city to do the inspection to confirm it, and we go ahead and take care of it. If people don't say anything, it doesn't get done, other than if the city crew sees it, and they would do it on their own to do it. But I'd encourage everybody out there who see issues to contact the city, and it will be addressed.
Absolutely. Those are excellent points. And to kind of add to those points, you haven't stopped there, too. So we want to make sure that the council we discuss and also the community understands too that you guys made an investment starting two years ago, and you're not done, right? So you guys, we've talked, and we had other study sessions, you know, a few months ago, and we talked about what's next. One option that we are pursuing is giving your team another tool, giving police, your team, a tool to do enforcement of the Taft municipal code, but also criminally, right? In that way, we can go to a court, and the court can connect people with services. And so we're navigating, updating your codes as well, right? To make sure on that criminal enforcement side, you have those tools available, they're up to code, they cover the issues that need to be covered in this community, and we're working with the courts to start that process so they can process these type of criminal actions. There are criminal prosecution cases of your municipal code. So if allows fails, if citations are not working, and the knock and talks are not working, you have another tool to help ensure that the community is safe. So that's another investment that takes time, but that you, as a council, have determined that you want to bring this to your community to help keep them safe. That's the criminal enforcement. You're also looking at addressing blight, you know, and broader properties in the city. The downtown, I think, I've been directed and I understand that that is a priority for the city to kind of enhance the downtown and make sure it's safe and usable for the community. And so you guys are taking steps already. You saw a lot of those properties on Center Street, you're taking action. It takes time to follow the legal process to do that, and you're investing the time and energy to make that happen for your community.
Well, Valerie, thank you so much for all the work to get us to this point. I think it's important that folks realize that really this is an investment of time, and it really underscores the things that Councilmember Cryer mentioned, time, right? We look at it, things move slowly in a governmental situation, but they have to for three reasons. If we don't have the policy that's compliant with the law, or at least isn't at least forbidden by law, you can't do it anyway. Once you have the policy in place, you have to establish processes and procedures that are compliant with that policy, compliant with the law, and then put them into practice, and then you have to have the accountability, you have to have the people to go out and do it, have those knock and talks, do the informals and the formal complaint process, and that's only half the battle. Because for the city as a whole, you have to find balance. You don't want to be so anti-cidus, or anti-freedom, or anti-business that you let anything go, that means you have no standards. But you also don't want to be so pro-business and pro-sis and pro-freedom that you don't, you don't have any standards. Again, you've got to make sure that you kind of find that balance between what's a good effort for the greater good, but it's not being overbearing, and I think this is a step in that right direction. I appreciate, and I know we all do appreciate the work that our code enforcement staff have done, our police department, and everybody else in between, even Public Works, to help implement these things, and to help continue to make our quality of life here at least where it has been, but hopefully, you know, improved and enhanced beyond that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two on tonight's agenda, presentation by Finance Director Teresa Binkley of the 2025 and 2026 proposed budget.
We can take like a five-minute recess so we can set up.
You got it. We're going to recess for five, we're going to be back here at 5:35.
Thank you, Valerie.
All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order here. Item number two on the agenda is where we are today, the presentation by the Finance Director Teresa Binkley regarding the 2025 and 2026 budget. Before we get into this, I will hand it off to Teresa here momentarily, but I will say, without a doubt, that although the mayor can be with us here tonight, that there is not a single person on this dais or probably here at City Hall that's more in tune with what the budget encompasses. We went through at least one finance committee meeting, June 2, we spent a couple hours down here coming through all the details, and I know, because I've had some of the conversations with Teresa and with Craig myself, about some of the questions that he's asked regarding our budget. So I does send his regards, want everybody to know that he does take this very, very seriously, but we did spend a lot of time going through the budget, and at this time I'll hand it off to Teresa Binkley, excuse me.
Hello. Can you hear my screen? I've lost my presentation. There we go. Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Teresa.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I'm happy here to present our budget for fiscal year 2025-26. If you have any questions as we go through here, feel free to stop me if you'd like. So in the beginning of this presentation, as always, it's a challenge to try and get this budget to balance because revenue staying rather consistent, going up slightly, but then having increases in cost and expenses, like everybody else, businesses, the community members, you know, we still have to fill those pains, too, personnel costs going up, utility bills, cost to purchase things. And then we still got to keep in mind, while we're preparing this budget, how to maintain a level of service that meets everybody in the community, their needs, and keeping the parks clean, the streets clean, everything maintained. And then finally, after doing all of that, you want to try to make sure that you're able to fund capital purchases, renewing your vehicles, and keeping your items as current as possible so that way you're able to provide the maintenance level of service that you need with decent equipment. So starting off here, here's our full, complete budget for all of our funds. So taking a look at general funds, there is a significant increase that we're proposing in the 2025-26 fiscal year over the 24-25, and we'll go into some of that here in just a few. And then also, another one that is significant is the Taft Community Correctional Facility, which is still a work in progress as we build up staffing there and getting our inmate counts up. So we'll see significant changes due to the operational, getting larger as it's going on. So, and then overall, most of the budgets stay pretty consistent. So and then overall, most of the budgets stay pretty consistent throughout from prior year to this year. So. So the increases that are beyond our control, the first four items on this list are related to personnel costs. So some of these costs are allocated to other funds where there are personnel costs. Not all of them are general fund, but they are allocated to the number of people that are allocated to the certain funds. So general fund and the correctional facility are the most largest, but they still affect sewer refus, transit and those those other funds. So some of these numbers may change. Long's working on it right now, but the preliminary numbers that we got was worker comp is increasing approximately $250,000 for the year. The 2425 number is what we actually paid. And then 2526, as you can see, they gave us an estimate of $629,000. Liability insurance, we were looking at an increase of almost $200,000. So the 2425, that is the actual number of what we pay. And the 26 fiscal year, that's what the estimate was. Calpers unfunded liability is increased to $1,385,701. That is an increase of approximately $146,000 from last fiscal year. That is a known number, that is factual, so that's what we have to pay in July. And then Calpers current expense, based upon estimate payroll numbers and the rates, it looks like it would be approximately $70,000. Now, that $70,000 is allocated through, again, all the different funds and it's based upon the estimate of payroll. So it could be higher, it could be lower, but it's it's our current year expenses that we pay percentage of payroll. And then the last one is fire services agreement. The increase in this fiscal, coming fiscal year is close to $228,000. This is the fourth year of our six-year agreement. So total overall for all these increases is $790,000 for the year. So revenue sources for general fund, these are the numbers, what was the final number for 2425? And then this is what we've estimated for 2526. Property taxes are kind of consistent. They're limited to how much they can increase. And then, of course, you have people that default or people that have defaulted but now paying. So if property tax kind of stays consistent, it's kind of easy to budget or estimate based upon historical. District tax and sales tax are a little more trickier because it's based upon people's spending habits and activities within the community. But based upon, we have a consultant that helps us do the calculations and take a look at spending habits and businesses that come in and go in, and these numbers are calculated. So we're kind of, we feel like we've been very conservative in our numbers to be able to prepare our budget with these. Transit lodging, based upon historicals, especially since we have Olderado come up, this number may be a little a little conservative, but Olderado is only a few weeks out of the year, so but we may end up having a little bit more than what we've budgeted. And then other current services and charges, that's where the largest increases. And that is due to our, since our correctional facility now is getting up and going, we're go through and we charge all the other funds and admin overhead fees for managing the funds for paying bills, paying payroll and those kinds of things. And we went ahead and now are going to start allocating some expense to the TAF Community Correctional Facility, so the increase is due to that. And then the only other thing that's significant in this list is the planning department. In 2425, they had a grant that helped pay for a study and now that is completed. So now their revenues have been decreased down to just what we anticipate on getting on permits and those things. And then the last one is the transfers in from gas tax and TDA funding. We have been getting our TDA claims and that money is being is being claimed to reimburse for projects and expenses that we have already completed. Also, there are a transfers in of for gas tax to pay for current streets and roads of $550,000. So that's mainly the rate increase. So looking at our adopted budget, our total budget for 2425 was a little over $8.6 million. And this year, it appears to be a large significant increase of 9.6. But then when you go ahead and subtract out the capital purchases between the two, it ends up being approximately $750,000 increase. Some of that is attributed to what I had talked about before, the things that were out of our control, the workers comp, the liability, the increase in the fire contract, and then, of course, the cost to purchase things and the cost of utilities and those kinds of things. So even though the beginning number looks kind of like, whoa, what happened? Overall, when you take a look at it, you can see that the increase is kind of explainable. So the operating transfers in, the ones I was talking about earlier, the $2 million, here is the breakdown. So there's the transfers in from gas tax money of $550,000. $50,000 is for the annual street striping and $500,000 is what we budget annually for just maintaining streets and roads in the community. And those, that has, the gas tax money is coming in, so we're planning on utilizing those monies for that, those. Then we are receiving a small amount from traffic safety that will come in of $5,300 that also will help maintain streets and roads. So we actually have $300,000 that's going to come in to pay for capital purchases. Then the $416,085 is when we were in the finance committee and we were discussing it, that was the amount that I needed to balance the budget. So this is the first year in many years that we've had to take in some money from capital reserves to balance the budget. But in the discussion at the finance committee, they felt that because of our unknowns with the liability and the workers comp, that we will do more likely take a look at it to see if we need to do a mid-year revision on figuring out how we need to cut the budget if the numbers stay or we don't get a significant decrease in those expenses or what we have to do. But a budget is just a snapshot in time and it's trying to help you maintain and get a track on how you want to spend. And so we'll definitely be taking a look at it to see what we can do to make sure that we don't really need to use monies from reserves. But it was just a, just to let us know that that's a possibility. And then finally, the last is the transfer in again from TDA funds, Fund 23. The $750,000 is monies that is is being used to claim, it's a claim to reimburse the city for projects that we have already done. And so that that is being transferred in. So for our, this is just a little reconciliation transfer that Bear Protem, Brian, had asked for. So basically, it's operational revenues with the minus the transfers in and you get your budget number or budget number, which is 9.6. And then operational expenditures at 8.7 with the capital purchases, which equals that. So it's a net, it's a net effect of $434,000.
Teresa, can I stop you right there?
Sure.
So I think I want to elaborate kind of what we're looking at here. It's very important that we realize what an operating surplus or deficit is and what a strategic or planned surplus or deficit is. What we're showing this year and kind of what's shown in this reconciliation, if you look at the very first line, roughly $9.2 million across all funds, that's the amount of revenue we're bringing in from one place or another, outside of transferring in and from outside funds, funds outside of the general fund. And if you take away all of our operational expenditures, again, all the same funds without any capital purchases or those types of things, it's roughly $8.7 million. So if you subtract, obviously, the expenses from your revenues, operationally, we're operating at a surplus of about $434,000. Not a bad thing, at least that's what we're projecting for fiscal year 2526. I think it's important that folks realize that when that number is negative, that means you're eating into the general fund and you have a, it could be a structural deficit or something else that you may want to look at because we all know that you can only write so many hot checks before that bank balance catches up with you, right? So I just want folks to realize that, one, we do operate on a balanced budget and we do that oftentimes either by transferring money out to other funds and in situations like this where we're transferring money in. But most of the time, it's to cover capital purchases beyond the needs of our day-to-day operations, right? And so I think that's what this reconciliation is intended to to reflect. Sorry, Teresa, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Okay, so overview of general fund revenues, like we talked about, I talked about earlier, receipts for property tax, sales tax revenue, the 1% district tax that again had began April 1st, 2022. It it has continued to come in higher than originally estimate estimated. Property tax didn't really have left. This actually is steadily increasing at the same rate as property tax. So that's kind of okay. And then service charges and fees that we charge other funds and other fees that, so other funds pay their share of costs to the general fund and that includes like running checks and paying payroll and those small things. And then the planning department revenue, which I had already kind of went over. So this this graph is kind of, the light blue is what we budgeted in those fiscal year and the darker blue is what we actually ended up. And so this is kind of a representation to tell you and show show the community that when we do budget, we do budget very conservatively. And normally, our revenues come in slightly more. One year, there was, I believe, there was some money that didn't come in that we expected and that was an anomaly. But as you can see on the other year, we're very conservative in our budget and normally our revenues do come in higher than what we do prepare our budget. So that's a, that's a good sign because then you hold your expenditures down and you end up with excess revenue. So and this one's a good, good representation to show you that sales tax and property tax are exactly in this year, exactly 50% of our revenue source. And so their, sales taxes are very, very important to the city that we maintain our sales tax and make sure that people in the community stay in our community and shop in our community because that is one of, you know, that's what supports the town and the community.
Teresa, would you say that one more time for the people in the back?
In the back?
I'm just kind of making a quick quip. We all understand that property taxes is something that comes to our city, which is great. The lion's share of that money goes to the county and the entire county is served through those funds. This particular graph underscores the fact that 42% of the revenues we get approximately directly are derived from the things that people purchase within the 93268 or within the city of tax limits. Please, if that sells you nothing else, shop local.
Okay, so major aid again is the district sales tax. And again, that money, the sales tax that is derived from the, our community, helps support and maintain our services at the level that we have. So these are the budgets for these safety. So police services, fire services, and the community service officer. Their budgets are for the fiscal year 2526 is a little over $5.1 billion. Measure A, that sales cap, helps continue these services at these levels. So, so let's talk about personnel expense. So one thing that, you know, the city really needs to be proud of is that our personnel expense is not as high as normally as other cities. So our personnel expense versus our general fund revenues are a little bit over 50%. So that means the remaining amount is utilized for other things like providing services to the community. A lot of people, you know, have maybe the misconception that, you know, all of the city money is paying for all these high salaries and all these high benefits and those kinds of things. And our our salaries and our benefits, even though they seem quite high, at least we can say that we have, it's only slightly over 50%. And that's, that could be a good thing. And then again, I mentioned that our fire service agreement, we're on year four of the sixth year, and these are the upcoming amounts for the upcoming year. And as you can see, this is where the the increase came from, from '25 to '26. So the end of the agreement, we're going to be at $1.2 million in fiscal year '28. General fund, additional points, like I brought up, the cost of providing services, fuel costs are going up, utilities, materials and supplies for doing different things and then office supplies. We're no, we, we are no different than any business or any community member. We have to learn how to manage our money and how we can try to figure out where we can save. And then, of course, utilities and those kinds of things are kind of out of your control. Water, water costs, we're, you know, we're no different than anybody else. So those are things that really hit our budget hard and we have to try to figure out where we can make up for those other monies. So, and this is an interesting, this is our expenditures. So on our expenditure side, as we talked about, you can see fire services and police department alone, those, and then, yeah, those two right there are 52% of our budget. So 52% of our expenditures alone are going to police and fire services. And those are the things that Major A helps pay for and it helps keep our community safe. So what is proposed in this budget for capital purchases? So in personnel, software, they're proposing to purchase, it's $20,100. In the police department budget is police vehicles, software, building improvements, and a radio repeater. And then in street maintenance, as I spoke about earlier, it's annual street striping, annual street annual street repairs, and there's the total of the $850,000 that we've seen a couple times within my presentation. So I'm going to go through the two, the sewer funds and the refuse fund. So the sewer fund, the sewer fund is money that is charged and billed on property taxes through, for residential, for commercial, it's billed, they receive a bill, so the businesses receive billing for them. So over the years, it's been pretty consistent, but as you can see, the, the net difference is getting smaller, and, but the cost rising, the cost to maintain sewer, and also the money that we collect for sewer helps support the wastewater treatment plant. So, and the cost to maintain the wastewater treatment plant is continuing to go up because of regulations and rules in regards to having a wastewater treatment plant. So these are things that we are going to be looking into in the upcoming, this upcoming fiscal year on the rates and making sure that it's sustainable. And then refuse fund, this has been, we entered into a franchise agreement with Westside Waste. So this fund is definitely going to be taken look at. The beginning of May, you guys approved a CPI increase from Westside Waste for their services that they provide, but we are also going to look at our rates and take a look at our services and those kinds of things for the refuse fund. Over time, you can see that in the past only four years, it's increased 300,000 in our budget, but that's because we've been being very conservative and making sure that we can live within our means, but you have all the rules and regulations that have come down from the state, and then those are going to have to start being looked at to make sure that the fees and the rates that we're charging are appropriate to keep with the rules and regulations of the state. So this slide here, Mayor Pro Tim Bryant had asked for it. So basically, this is a very, very unaudited, and because we're still trying to get our financials cleared up and cleaned up, but, so we have an estimated revenue and expenses, so our net change in position are transferred in from gas tax and then our inter-fund transfer. So our beginning balance of our fun, our fund balance, now, fund balance is not cash, it's, fund balance is assets minus the liabilities. So it is, it includes cash and includes accounts receivables and then liabilities, so accounts payables and those kinds of things. So then you get your fund balance, and then when you take your fund balance minus out what our net position changes, you're going to get an estimate in the fund balance of 1.6 million.
Teresa, can I stop you right there? Quick question.
Sure.
Based on what I see here, I think it's the fourth or fifth slide, when you talk about transfers in, there is a transfer in from capital of that $416,850, or $85, excuse me, that we're bringing in from a fund outside of the general fund to subsidize those purchases, correct?
No, that's coming from general fund.
Okay, but it says, on that slide, it says transfers in from general fund?
Yes, it is. The 850 is transferred in from, transferred in, oh, it says gas tax fund.
Yeah, because you've got-
That is transferred in from, from general fund and gas tax fund.
Because you've got Fund 22, which is $550,000 transferred in, another $300,100 from Fund 93, for that, that's your 800,000 or 850,100, right?
Yes.
In addition to that, you've got another $416,000 line item, also says it's being transferred in from, from the general fund.
Yes.
And it was my understanding that those funds were coming from capital reserves to subsidize capital purchases.
Correct.
So in that case, if we're subsidizing capital purchases, you shouldn't see a decrease in your net fund balance in the general fund?
It would be 550,000 coming from gas tax fund, and then the remaining amount, 700, 800,000, yeah, 800 and some thousand is coming from reserves. It is proposed, it may or may not, but it's proposed.
Okay. Go ahead, I apologize, we'll, we'll discuss some more here, here just a bit.
Okay. So I didn't answer your question, that's fine, but, but yes, it's going to, it's going to decrease because this, this year, general fund balance includes reserves from, in Fund 93 and Fund 10. So, and that's the end.
All right, gentlemen, at this time, I'm going to open up the table. I'll start down at the end with Mr. Shavira, do you have any questions there, sir?
I don't have any questions, but I do have mainly comments. You know, I'm not a number guy for the most part, but I will say this, I do appreciate all the detail. It is so important that we remain transparent for our viewers. You know, there's a lot of questions in the community currently with our economic status, and these are the kind of meetings that we need to be paying attention to, these are the kind of meetings where we need our community here listening to the details of how our, how our community is, is managing and spending our money. So I appreciate you taking the time and being so detailed because this is super important information for all of us to be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crier.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Teresa Briesley and her staff, putting all this together, it looks very well put. Some questions I have is on here on asset forfeiture. It went from $51,200 down to $372. Is that a reason for that or not? Laws changed or what's, what's, that would be on, I think, the third page.
Yes, asset forfeiture is money that we receive when an asset is forfeited from an arrest. So it is very, it goes up and down, so it's not anticipated, you know what I mean? So they have to make an arrest, we have to have money sitting in an account when the case is finally completed, and they say, okay, the forfeited item, whatever it is, is going to be distributed to the city. So it's not frequently, and it does go up and down from year to year.
So that number is fluid then?
Yes.
That can change. Yes, I didn't hear? No?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other question?
No problem.
Had to bear with me, I'm getting, each year, I'm getting a little hair older, but wiser, hopefully. Anyway, on another question I have on crime, I have a few questions on there. I didn't want to interrupt you at all, you know, to your presentation. Crime prevention, it went down by almost 79,000. Is there-
Yes.
That something that, the budget, was enough money in there to cover that part or?
No. Okay, so crime prevention, that's the community service officer. We used to have two community service officers, and we have three quarters of a lieutenant's position being allocated to that position. For the past several years, we've only had one community service officer and the lieutenant. At this point, when I was doing the budgeting, I went ahead and removed one of the community service officers because at this point, that position, I believe, no longer exists, so it's been removed from the budget, so that's why the decrease.
Okay. Then another one I have on the federal wastewater treatment plant, from, from 600,000 down to 86,000, that's due, they're not getting any more income from the federal side, under federal?
Closed.
Closed, that's the reason why the difference-
That's the reason it was closed.
That's the reason why it dropped down. That definitely affects the budget right there. That's a, I'm there, but, so we're spending more money now on our budget than we have because of all the extra costs of inflation and trying to run our city properly with everything, and it's, hopefully we can generate more incomes in other areas, but, but the public can see that we're doing our best, we have our pencils pretty well sharpened all we can, and I know the finance department is really working hard and making all these numbers match and meet. But I have a couple more, but, but like I said, we have a change of almost $1.3 million in extra costs for this coming year, throughout the whole budget. That's on, I think, to the last page.
Yeah, the one thing to keep in mind right there, if you don't mind, we are bringing, doing an additional, bringing money to do roads, that's what that extra $550,000 is, so some of that's going to be included in your additional expense year over year, but you're right, we do have additional expenses. She did mention-
We work on roads every year, pretty much, don't we?
We do, but I just don't think to this degree, is that correct, City Manager Jones?
Correct.
So the amount that we're spending on roads for '25, '26, at least is projected currently higher than it was in '24, '25?
Well, '24, '25, we were going to 250, we didn't spend any, so I'm hoping to do twice as much within one year because of the cost of the construction.
And so to Councilmember Crier's point, you might see kind of an artificially low '24, '25 final budget and slightly artificially high, although equal year over, for the two year period in roads and such.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Councilmember Crier. Councilmember Waldrop.
Well, I have no questions, it's just a lot of work, and I know what you're going through, Teresa, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. And I will second that, this is what I do professionally, obviously I don't do it for a city, but I do have to do it in fund accounting and other pseudo municipal organizations, so I get it. It's a lot of work, a lot of balancing and things like that. We do appreciate the visuals because I think as, as much as we can do to make this as understandable for the layman and the average citizen is critical. We understand that there's some ways that we just can't, you know, bring it down to a level that's super easy to understand because it's not super easy at its core, but if we can find ways to make it make sense to the people at home, the, looking at that ending fund balance is a perfect way to look at it, you know, how much do you have in assets as an individual, after you factor out all the people you owe, all the things you owe money for that are truly debt or liabilities, what do you have in the bank? And at the end of the day, cash is king. You live and die by the ending fund balance, and if your ending fund balance is zero or below, you're bankrupt, you have nothing, you're insolvent, and that's the last place that we'd like to be. So Teresa, anything else?
No.
City Manager Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that at this point, all cities are having trouble because a lot of this stuff is unknown. We make our best guess, and the changes in workman's comp, liability, those type of things, we don't know the actuals yet, we usually know like a month after we adopt our budget. So one thing to keep in mind, as we pass the spending plan, we're going to ask staff not to go out and make any major purchases, we're not going to go out and spend a lot of money. This is kind of a continuing budget to allow us to continue to operate, and we will most likely be back in October in Finance Committee, re-discussing this budget to make sure this is something that we can move forward with for the next three quarters beyond October.
Thank you, and that definitely will underscore that during the Finance Committee meetings when we discussed this item, we were very specific about, you know, knowing that we want to be as conservative as we can with everything that we can be conservative with while recognizing what we expect our full cost to be on the expenditure side, and anybody that's good at business does that, you under-promise and over-deliver, right? And I think that's our goal, that was shown in your revenue projections, how we typically beat revenue projections year over year, and not to show folks that we're trying to undersell things on the front end, but we also don't want to be able to over-promise and under-deliver, right? We want to make sure that we can meet the needs of our day-to-day operations and our staff and the citizens of the City of Taft, so. If there's nothing further, we'll move on from this item on to item three. All right, thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome.
Item number three on tonight's agenda is the approval of the final budget for fiscal year 2024, '25, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, '26. The recommended action being a motion to adopt the resolution entitled the resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, adopting the City of Taft's final budget for fiscal year 2024, '25, and the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2025, '26, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second motion from Councilmember Crier, second from Councilmember Waldrop. Councilmember Crier, you had the motion on this, would you need anything further?
I think that was said. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Waldrop.
I did owe that.
Very good. Councilmember Crier, or, excuse me, Shavira.
So I just want to ask a question really quick, just to, just to make sure that we understand this correctly, there is a committee, a finance committee, and yourself and the mayor sit on, correct?
That is correct.
And there's review of all and discussions about our budget even before it gets to, to us, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Beyond the detail that you see here in this presentation, this is just a microcosm of the paperwork that we get out of the MUNIS system and the work and time and effort.
That is a public meeting duly advertised, and so-
We would love to see-
Say that a little bit louder.
It is an open, public meeting, and it is advertised.
If anybody's interested in coming to the Finance Committee meetings, I'd be glad to give you a ride, or I could hitch a ride with you either way, come and help us peruse the MUNIS documents because it is a joy. All right, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crier?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shavira?
Yes.
And that passes on a 4-0 vote with one absence. Item number four on tonight's agenda, citizen request and public comment, do we have anybody that would like to speak at the meeting? If not, I'll dispense of the reading of that item and we can move on. Perfect, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number five, council statements non-action, I'm going to start at the, my right, Councilman Shavira.
Yes, thank you, sir. So, you know, I love these types of meetings, and the reason is, is, you know, we get a lot of concerns, and rightfully so. This is, this is your, your board, this is your community, and you have every right to know and understand what's going on within our community. You know, here we have both documents, you have every right to get onto the website, the city's website, and, correct me if I'm wrong, these are on there?
They should be, yes, sir.
Okay, so even if you're not able to make it, you have every right to get onto the link, peruse these documents, and if you have any questions, you can come by and have conversation with us. But again, I like these, these meetings because these, these are the things that we need to be aware of. So if you would like to attend a meeting and have questions, or have questions, please, please come by, visit us, and let's sit down and talk. That's all I have, thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Councilman Crier.
Thank you. I had a good weekend this week, I got a chance to watch that 250-year celebration of the Army, and I watched it from the beginning to end, and it was great how they went through the history, through the revolution, through the different wars that we went through, and all the weapons, and they did, and the flybys, all of it interesting, and they had a big crowd, what it looked like on TV, was a huge crowd and a huge success, and the Flag Day, or celebration of Flag Day and stuff, and I just hope we all learn or know the history of our flag. It's a very interesting, know what each, the symbolism of it, the stripes, the stars, how many stars and how many stripes, and what they stand for, the colors. There's a very interesting, the protocol that we have for our flags, and we're one of the very few countries in the world that would take great pride of our flag. You don't see flags flying all over the place in other countries, it's more just for the government, business, offices, military, that's about it, but you go, you go anywhere in our, in any cities, any blocks, you see the American flag proudly being displayed in front of their businesses or in front of their homes, and that's a very- And that's a very patriotic and it's, it's great to see that. Um, another thing too, if I, I like to say is, um. I'll, I'll put it off to, uh, agenda request on this one here. Our agenda request, may I do it now? But I think that we need maybe at the end of this meeting, for, have a moment of silence. We, um, lost a gentleman. Jerry Gibby. Passed away yesterday. Jerry Gibby?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're a member of the council. Ron Waldrop, his statement, he can talk about, about that. I'd like to, let's do that and remember some of him and his wife. And I'll close at that.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Cryer. Mr. Waldrop?
Yes, that was part of my, uh, statement, uh, about a month and a half ago. We lost, these are both Lion Members, uh, and, uh, about a month and a half ago, we lost a wife. The family lives up in Nevada, they had to come all the way down, did a very good deal. And now we got to come back again. I got a call, uh, Monday night that, uh, the neighbors over, uh, Jerry Gibby's house was checking on him and found the door open, went in and found him, he had passed away. And, uh, he is a past council chair, uh, member of the City Council. I served with him on, in fact, uh. He was getting dementia, but he still, he was doing pretty good. Uh, I thought he was in good shape and all of a sudden, uh, we lose him and we got to do it all over again. So, uh, I just wanted to make the public know that we lost a good City Council member. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, at this time, I have no further statement. I will say, I would ask that you bring that up when we get to future agenda items. So we do them justice. I think it'd be best that we ask that we, we bring that forward to the council, put it on the agenda so we can put together, you know, some type of narrative or just do it instead of flying by the seat of our pants tonight. I definitely don't want to diminish the recency and urgency of their passing, but I also don't want to diminish their service by just doing it by the seat of our pants.
I could let the family know because they'll be coming down.
Would that be all okay?
With me.
Very good, all right. Uh, moving on, item number six, we have a planning commissioner here. Do we have a planning commissioner's report?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the, uh, City Council. Our meeting last, uh, last, a week ago Wednesday was to, um, approve an ABC license. We really don't approve the license, we just approve the, um, willingness of the city to accept having another license in the area. It was for the Apple Market, the new one over here in the old Kmart section. Almost every place is impacted in Taft when it comes to the, uh, addition of any kind of liquor license. So it almost always comes to the planning commission. We really rely on the police department to tell us whether or not they think it's a good idea. And, um, when they do, then we go ahead and approve it, which is what we did. We also had the opportunity to say goodbye to Mark Staples, who's done a fantastic job as far as I'm concerned. In all the years I dealt with planning and city-related issues down in the city of San Diego, I don't think I ran into a more conscientious, um, person in dealing with planning matters. I think he grew quite a bit here, got opportunities I think he wouldn't have had elsewhere. So I think it was probably a good deal for him as well it was for us and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Livingston. All right, item, item number seven on tonight's agenda is department reports. Do we have any department reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number eight, City Manager statements. City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Along the lines of Planning Department, um, we had a, uh, Planning Commission meeting scheduled for July second. There is a chance that that will get canceled and it will be in the form of a special meeting later on. We do have a CUP application that will require proper noticing for that meeting to take place. We are currently in transition with our planning consultant that will be assigning us an associate planner to work on all of our projects that we have going on. The project that seek in a CUP is the California Broadband Fiber Hut Project. It's a fifty-by-fifty accessory building over by, uh, the Tractor Supply. And it'll be, it'll serve as a, uh, a hub for new fiber, uh, high-speed internet. So nothing will probably go against, but it does have to go before the Planning Commission. So probably the second or third week of July, possibly a special meeting for those folks. And they'll be, uh, hopefully they will be introduced to the new associate planner that will be running the Planning Commission meetings. Uh, we plan on having that person here face-to-face for those meetings. And that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes.
The Planning Commission meetings, could you briefly explain to us what happens at these Planning Commission? What is for, please?
So there are Planning Commission meetings once a month or by special meeting as necessary. There's certain aspects from the planning, land use that requires basically the blessing from the city to do certain things under a conditional use permit. And may, their main function, other than serving as a board for the Planning Department, is to, uh, weigh, you know, uh, projects to see if they are, they bring value to the city and how they should be built. It could be, um, what a building looks like, you know? So there are conditions of approval. There are certain things that are approved by right, which can be over the counter. But those that require conditional, uh, permits usually go before the Planning Commission.
And is that open to the public?
It is open to the public.
Okay, just want to make.
All of our public meetings have to be properly noticed, usually at least four, eight hours in advance. Usually it's a lot more. And it usually includes all of the information. So even if you can't attend, you can read and you can submit comments by email.
So similar to our meetings here?
Very similar.
And I just wanted to make sure that the community understands is, again, we're being transparent. Nothing's been hidden and you're all welcome to any of these forms of meetings. Thank you.
It is our, is our, uh, our hopes to keep the Planning Commission very active as they have been in the past.
Great, thank you, Ms. Jones.
And to reiterate that, the Planning Commission meets on the third Wednesday.
Is it third Wednesday?
Or did that change?
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday. All right, so the City Council meets first and third Tuesday. Planning Commission meets the Wednesday following the first meeting of the month of the council. So the first Wednesday. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. City Manager Jones, thank you for the statement.
Thank you.
Item number nine, City Attorney's Statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. No, no statement.
I still think the beard is all the statement you're ever going to need. I love it, Jason. I don't know what you'd look like without the beard anymore. You had it so long and I like it.
I don't remember myself.
I very much like it. All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item number ten, future agenda requests. Gentlemen?
None here.
I'd like for Ron to.
Yeah, we, we need to, uh, consider doing something for the family of Jerry Gibby's, uh, thank you for all the service or something, you know?
So when you talk about doing something for Mr. Gibby, uh, maybe adjourning in his memory at some meeting here in the near future, would that be sufficient?
Yeah.
And, Orso, did you mention there was another person there or was it just Mr. Gibby?
His wife died just not too long ago.
Okay, I see. Well, we haven't really made it a practice of looking at the wives, but I'm sure we can recognize her as part of the process for Mr. Gibby. Uh, does somebody want to offer concurrence for, uh, for the request from Councilmember Waldrop?
Second.
Very good, thank you. We have concurrence. Uh, we'll look at a, a future meeting in the, you know, near future sometime, probably in July or maybe early August. Absolutely, I would encourage you, gentlemen, when you go through that.
I should have some.
Talk to the clerk if you want any specific narrative, make sure that you get that to her and we can make sure we do it justice.
You bet.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other future agenda requests? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Uh, the next items are the Consent Agenda, items eleven through twenty-three. All items on the Consent Agenda shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member, or unless a member of the City Council requests specific items to be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate action. Any items removed from the Consent Agenda will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none. Those items are item number eleven, the June third, twenty-two-five regular meeting minutes. Recommendation there is that those be approved as submitted. Item twelve is the payment of bills, some four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. The recommendation there is the bills are approved, or, excuse me, that we approve the payment of those bills. Item number thirteen is the monthly report from Kern County Fire Station number twenty-one for May of twenty-two-five. The recommended action there is to receive and file the monthly report for May twenty-two-five from the Kern County Fire Station, uh, number twenty-one and find the activity is not a project per the State of California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of those SEQA guidelines. Item number fourteen, Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number One Engineers Report. The recommendation is twofold there. First is to receive the twenty-two-five, twenty-six Engineers Report for Landscape Maintenance District One. And the second piece is to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, declaring its intention to review the improvements and fees for Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District One and set the public hearing for July fifteenth, twenty-two-five and find that the activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-one, B-three and this, of the SEQA guidelines. Item fifteen, the recommendations, uh, excuse me, recommendations to modify six city position classifications for employee recruitment and retention. The recommendation there is to, a motion to adopt a resolution entitled the resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, updating the position classification plan for city departments and to add Transit Supervisor, Mechanic Two, Assistant Finance Director, Development Services Technician, Office Assistant Two, and to change One Equipment Operator One, Two to a Lead Maintenance Worker and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines. I will add that those items have gone through both the Personnel and Finance Committee. Item number sixteen, Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee Appointment. The recommendation is to, a motion to appoint Sherri Black to the vacant position of the Measure A Citizens Oversight Committee effective July first, twenty-two-five and to find that that activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in the section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of those SEQA guidelines. Interesting that you have to find that a person doing a job is not an impact on the environment. God bless the law. Item number seventeen, annual audited financial statements for the City of Taft Wastewater Treatment Plant fiscal year twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. The recommendation there is to motion, a motion to receive and file the audited annual comprehensive financial report for the wastewater treatment plant and management report for the wastewater treatment plant for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty and find that the activity is not a project per the Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in the, in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and one, section one-five-three-seven-eight of those SEQA guidelines. Item eighteen, an annual audited financial statements for fiscal year twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. The recommendation is a motion to receive and file the annual, annual audited comprehensive financial reports for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Item nineteen, a contract for interim professional planning services. The recommendation there is a motion to approve the ratification of the agreement with Precision Engineering Services Incorporated for general on-call planning services and find that that activity is not a project per California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Item twenty, approval of special event permit to, uh, excuse me, twenty-two-five dash oh-eight for the Taft Chamber of Commerce to host the fireworks show on Thursday, July third, twenty-twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. The recommendation there is twofold. First, a motion to approve a resolution entitled the resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, approving the special event permit number twenty-two-five dash oh-eight by the Taft Chamber of Commerce and ho, and, or, excuse me, to host the fireworks show along the Railset Trails between Second and Ten Streets on Thursday, July third, twenty-twenty-five. Second part of that recommendation is to find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-one, B-three of those SEQA guidelines. Item number twenty-one, the updated rental form and rates for the Old Arado Room located at the Transit Center. The recommendation being a motion to approve the updated, update of the rental forms and rates for the city-owned event center known as the Old Arado Room, located at the Taft Transit Center Building at five-five-oh supply row here in Taft and find that this activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Item number twenty-two, professional services agreement HF and HSB thirteen-eighty-three tech, technical assistance. The recommendation there being a motion to authorize the City Manager to sign an agreement with HF and H Consultants to assist in SB thirteen-eighty-three compliance and find that this activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Lastly, item twenty-three, a purchase of eight Model Seven less-lethal tasers for the Taft Police Department. The recommendation there is a motion to accept a quote provided by Pro Force for twenty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars fifty-seven cents and to authorize a signature from the City Manager to accept the quote and find that this activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in section one-five-oh-six-oh, C-three and section one-five-three-seven-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Would any member of the council like to pull any items from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to proceed.
Motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cryer, a second from Councilmember Waldrop. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shavira?
Yes.
And the Consent Agenda passes on a four oh vote with one absence. Next item on tonight's agenda, item twenty-four is the, to appoint three members to the Taft City Council Planning Commission, excuse me, not Taft City Council Planning Commission, the City of Taft Planning Commission to fulfill scheduled vacancies. The recommendation there is one, to interview the applicants and two, to, a, a motion to appoint three members chosen to serve on the City of Taft Planning Commission for the terms of July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, I'd see we do have at least one member here, all right, maybe both two members, excuse me, Jerry, I forget, Jerry, you're just, you're like that statue that's always in the corner, always there. We have two gentlemen here who have applied, as well as one has provided a letter. Uh, if you guys would like, you guys, I'll open up the floor if it's appropriate to, uh, give any comments. And if not, I'm going to read the letter here into the, into the record. This, uh, this letter was provided from Mr. Stephen McDaniel in regard to this specific item. And it says, greetings. I apologize for being unable to attend the meeting. I am at, I am the project director for an event in my organization called Camp Meeting. Camp Meeting is a four-day event in Watsonville, California with an attendance of approximately eighteen-hundred to two-thousand people each night. I work on planning this project for most of the year and this week is the actual event itself. I would like to thank you in advance for understanding my absence tonight. That being said, I have a short response to the questions sent to me by the city clerk. Question one being, why do you want to be appointed and what are your qualifications? The answer, I desire to be appointed as Planning Commissioner because the City of Taft is the best city in which I've ever lived. I've lived, pastored and owned businesses in several other cities and none have supported small business like the people of the City of Taft and its leadership. I currently serve as a Kiwanian, a pastor in the City of Taft, a college professor at Taft College and the appointed representative to the Keep Kern Beautiful area for Taft and the surrounding areas, appointed by Supervisor Chris Parlier. I believe that these experiences, along with others, have given me perspective that will help me serve the City of Taft. Question two, if appointed, what are your goals for the City of Taft? Answer, I would like to see the City of Taft continue to thrive as both a business entity and a community where people can live, work and raise their families. Furthermore, I want to promote the establishment of small businesses in the city, support the defense of oil and gas and petrochemicals and preserve the beauty and integrity of our city. Question three, where do you wish to see the City of Taft in the future? I wish to see the City of Taft continue to thrive and grow financially and commercially while maintaining the integrity that has made Taft one of the finest communities in the state of California. Question four, what do you believe your role is as a commissioner? The answer, I believe my role as a commissioner is to assist the City Council in any way possible. I think this includes providing advice and feedback, helping generate ideas, exploring issues facing the city and offering support to the City Council, businesses, families and community members through methods mentioned earlier. Question five, what is the number one issue facing the City of Taft and how should it be resolved? The answer, the biggest problem facing the City of Taft are policies coming out of Sacramento by the state of California. The assault on oil, gas and petrochemicals, chemicals is appalling. The resolution to this dilemma includes greater education and awareness regarding the necessity of oil, gas and petrochemical industries. As a city leader and community advocate, I believe this will, this will be my part, uh, excuse me, I believe it will be part of my task to support the industry that fuels our local economy and drives our world. Thank you for consideration. God bless you all, Stephen J. McDaniel. All right. So the items on the table as our recommended, or, excuse me, are the recommendations I read earlier. Uh, item number one, interview the applicants. And item two, a motion to appoint three members to choose, are chosen to serve the City of Taft Planning Commission for terms from July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine.
Motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second over here? All right, gentlemen, any further discussion?
No.
We have three, we have three.
Three great ones.
We have only mentioned that three people applied.
Yeah, we have three, three vacancies, three interested. Very good. At this time, uh, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call? a roll call?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavira?
Yes.
That passes on a 4-0 vote with one absence. Gentlemen, we want to thank you very much for your interest or continued interest in serving. You're a vital part of what happens here in the City of Taft every day, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. Item number 25, lease option agreement, Verizon Cell Tower. The recommendation is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with, oh, excuse me, City Manager Jones. I'll let you have the staff report if we have one there.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bryant. City staff has negotiated the attached agreement with Towers LLC California for the potential installation of a new Verizon cellular tower. This four-year option to lease city-owned property located adjacent to the Tractor Supply Shopping Center as depicted in Exhibit 2 of the attached agreement. This area is known to have little to no cell service at times, which has posed communication issues with our Taft Police Department located within proximity to the proposed cell tower location. The city will receive approximately $16,000 per year once the lease option is exercised by the tenant. The attached agreement has been reviewed and edited by the city attorney. This project is considered exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to California Code of Regulations, Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures.
Thank you, City Manager Jones. The recommended action, excuse me, is a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Towers LLC option to lease a, for a Verizon cell tower. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Second, first motion?
Got a motion there. We will have a second.
Second.
Got a second from Councilmember Waldrop. So we have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, the property there is part of the city, owns that property. And it's, it's good for the city because it helps bring a little bit more income, not much, but a little bit more income. You might be able to pay an employee for a month, but it still helps out. But it's not a profit, maybe a non-much or profit, but takes use of that property, that land there, because it's not, it's so small, it doesn't, nothing else is good, there's nothing good for anything for that. So it works out perfect. So it's a good marriage between Verizon and the city to put that in.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Chavira, anything there?
Do we do any forms of risk assessments for those types of cell towers?
The state does.
State, fair enough. Just curious.
Very good.
I don't know if there's any.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of articles.
Sure.
You know, that's, the agencies that regulate them say they're safe.
Okay. I was just curious.
Very good. Anything further?
No, sir.
And Councilmember Waldrop, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And to Councilmember Cryer's point, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye. And it's not going to pay much, but it pays more than zero. So that's always a good step in the right direction. Also, very critical that we understand what the safety hazards could or would be, and we're hopeful that governments at all levels would do their best to protect us, but it is our right and responsibility to, to follow up there as well. So gentlemen, we have a, or, excuse me, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Chavira?
Yes.
That passes on a 4-0 vote with one absence. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've reached the end of our, our meeting. It looks like there will be no closed session tonight. So gentlemen, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion here?
Second.
Second here. All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.